Okay, first one tonight. Resolution zero seven twenty twenty-two is a resolution amending the red flag policy of the town of Wellington. Patty's gonna tell us a little bit about what the red flag means.
Hi there, Mayor and trustees, my computer was being very slow opening, so I apologize. So this is something that was adopted by the trustees and I'm trying to think maybe two thousand seven, two thousand eight. It was, it's related to requirements from the FTC for, for entities that would have sensitive data of from their customers. So like addresses, social security numbers, things like that. And we were required, we were required to put in place some ways to protect that information and make sure that it was not being shared inappropriately with anyone. So you know, as far as our utilities, we don't keep social security numbers. We don't keep any of that information, but we do verify people's applications. So we verify they are who they are, but we don't keep any of that data on file. So this policy, like I said, was adopted many years ago. And like I said, I think it was two thousand seven or two thousand eight. And in the, the title of the resolution, it had town of Wellington, but the body talked about the town of Severance. So it was a copy and paste, which we all do, you know, it's just, it's easy to do, you know, we just steal from others. So when it comes to documents like that, oops, so sorry. Okay, can I strike that? Let the record show Patty would like to have that strike, stricken from the record. Anyway. So this was a document, this is, we were getting a new finance director, I found the document, I'm like, you know, Mr. Sapienza, what do you think? And he says, you know, we should probably re-adopt it using town of Wellington. We also noticed that in the attachment, attachment A, that talked about the guidelines itself, it referred to the town clerk as oversight of this position or whoever is over utilities. It talked about town manager. So we changed some of that language, just the titles to reflect what is currently in, in our code for reporting, reporting structure. So really this is a cleanup and an administrative act, just to make sure that it says the town of Wellington as opposed to the town of Severance.
That's all it is.
That is all it is. So simple. It may be the simplest thing you do all night.
Okay, any questions on that?
So just to clarify, there are no changes to the policy other than just the names and titles and then fixing the town name?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, public comment? On that one? I just want to keep it Severance? We'll bring it back. All right, if that's all there is to say, no one else has any more, can we go ahead and get a motion to approve resolution number zero seven twenty twenty-two correcting the language of amending the red flag policy?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
See Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor for Tim Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh my gosh. Let's, let's get, sit down over here. Okay. Let's get on to our big one here tonight. Ready? Negan's coming up here. We're gonna talk about ordinance zero three dash twenty twenty-two. This is the ordinance establishing the fees to be charged by the town of Wellington, Colorado for sewer utility services. Do we need a drum roll?
Mayor and trustees, while I navigate the IT land of which is not my forte. Perfect. Good evening, Mayor and trustees, town of Wellington residents. My name is Negan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works, and we are here this evening to propose. Should I start over? Okay, we are here this evening to propose an adjustment to sewer rates to be effective on the first bill cycle after our March reads, so residents would see this impact on their May bills. So we are gonna start with some similar background that you've seen in previous presentations to make sure everybody has the same starting point. Those folks that are tuning in this evening, maybe for the first time. Just as a reminder, Wellington did create our water and sewer utility in the nineteen sixties. We stepped it up from there in the early two thousands, two thousand and one, which is when we formed both the, a separate water and wastewater enterprise fund. The next bullets there talk about our treatment plant expansion needs and how we plan those in anticipation of growth. And as I believe most folks are aware, and if you're not, we are underway with both a water treatment plant expansion effort as well as a wastewater treatment plant expansion effort. So just a couple of notes around how funding works with these enterprise funds. These utilities do function similar to a nonprofit insofar as we do need to be self-sustaining, but we're not looking to make a profit from our activities and our rates. Our main funding sources include those rates that are paid by our customers as well as our development impact fees paid as home builders and commercial developers come to our community and then as well through some loans and grants. Most of our expenses then are captured through our operations and maintenance budgets. And then of course, a pretty robust capital improvements plan, which does include those plant expansions. Of course, the financial health of our utility is critical. We have a pretty robust fund balance policy currently that we need to meet and maintain. We are really looking at making sure we're accounting for very rigorous accounting practices and continuous monitoring of both our expenses and our incomes and which allows us to set prop rates properly. Part of that is requiring a very regular and periodic fee adjustments, which is why we're here this evening. Now, as I mentioned, we are in the underway for both a water treatment plant expansion. I'm not gonna beat this one too hard, but we are expecting that ninety percent design cost estimate on schedule in to be, we would be bringing it to you in March and expecting to break ground mid, mid this year, so June likely. And then with our wastewater treatment plant expansion, that is one we have been in front of you with more recently as it's part of our SRF loan requirement coming to you and part of this rate adjustment is a requirement to meeting qualification for the SRF loan, which is a big part of how we're funding this effort. So you can see the timeline there on the right. And we are expected to be coming back to you, I believe at the work session and then followed up after that at a, at a regular meeting with the final contract amendment for the wastewater treatment plant expansion construction. So to touch briefly on water rates, as you did see in your packet memo this evening, we, staff has recommended that we place a pause on looking at increasing water rates at this time. There are a couple of reasons that go into that, one of which is as we've done and gotten closer to the end of the year for twenty twenty-one and we're able to get closer to closing our books and realize any savings. We did see that we had a pretty significant operational savings in twenty twenty-one that we can book forward to twenty twenty-two. That's a big part of it, but then also with the direct, with your direction to be considering placing a transfer from the general fund into both the water fund and the sewer fund based on those allowable maximums. Those two kind of budget sources together can fill any gap that we might see by not opening or not updating those rates this year. Given the significant increase that we've seen in the past, which is what you see right here of these recent water rates adjustments, we would like to, to take the opportunity to vet through another full rate study. And then also in combination with the fact that we are coming this evening to ask you to increase our water rates in order to meet approval for our SRF loan requirement, we would like to table that right now. Oh, I'm so sorry, I misspoke.
And, and can you, just for a lot of folks who might not know, what is the SRF?
Thank you. The state revolving fund loan program that is funded by federal dollars issued through the state of Colorado, Colorado Water, Colorado Power and Water Resource Development Authority is the issuing grant granting agency. Thank you. Okay, so then moving forward onto this proposed sewer rates. We did, again, I just want to touch on the, the significant amount of outreach that we have done around this effort around making sure that there were, there were opportunities to engage the public, opportunities to engage the board, both work sessions, both online, including a resident rate roundtable that was formed specifically for this effort, which I hate to beat a dead horse, but was a very successful effort. And this is just an overview then again of kind of this timeline of where we've been. It has been a long journey. It's been a whole year and I think it's been a very productive one. I guess I was only here for the last third of it, but I still, I got to jump in and the, the more fun part with the roundtable and kind of really getting into the, the weeds with the rates. So again, just a reminder of that timeline, we did, we are here with you this evening with the hope of adopting this rate. It is a requirement as again of the SRF loan approval process, that state revolving fund loan approval process. We are slated to go in front of their board for their approval on March fourth. Just to provide that background again, as you can see here, these are our historical rate, both base rate and usage rate table, and you can notice that we have not had a rate increase for sewer rates since twenty sixteen. So for six years, we've had consistent rates. And then this evening, we are bringing forward the proposed sewer rates that we presented at our last board meeting around this one time for this year, as this rate is that we're looking at this evening is for just twenty twenty-two. I do want to clarify that as you read through this slide and I realize there's a lot of information, but it does just talk about the assumptions that were made and the modeling that was done in order to develop that rate. It does look at identifying that this would still resort, result in a projected shortfall in the town fund balance reserve policy, but that is something that we can address and with your direction and acceptance can approve. It would include that one-time general fund transfer to the sewer fund and it would result in this year one or April in, in effect, April rate update of thirty-one dollars for a base rate with a usage rate of ten dollars per thousand gallons. And to clarify, that base rate does include the first three thousand gallons and that usage rate then applies to all usage in excess of four thousand gallons and above. Now, that usage rate is, or excuse me, that usage volume is calculated based on kind of what's referenced as your winter quarter average of water use. So it is the average water use in your home in the months of January, February and March are then averaged together and updated in our system in April. So that's good timing. This would take effect at the same time that, that those, that winter quarter average would be recalculated and updated in our system. This just provides a snapshot of a handful of years of a fund balance projection based on these rate increases. You do see again there that we would dip below that fund balance reserve policy for a couple of years, but we would have a plan showing us being able to, to come back up out of that deficit. And just to step through again, kind of an impact, so you can see this impact to the broader entire bill and not just speaking about the sewer portion, but how does that impact the whole bill that you receive from the town of Wellington? I do have a couple of comparisons. I have again developed these comparisons based on, and it doesn't have as much, it doesn't have the same impact here when we were not talking about water rates increasing, but I did look at both a winter expected average bill with our current rates, current water, current sewer, current storm drainage compared to with our proposed sewer rates. And then again, on the next slide, it looks at that summer bill and you see it's a fixed increase now since we're not talking about a varying like tier changes and rate changes for the water rates. It's just looking at that sewer base rate or base and usage rate change. Now we do still have many ongoing efforts.
That's the twenty thirteen increase. Am I reading that right? That's not the April.
Which, no, this is, this is the, the increase for April. Does that? Do you want me to go back?
Yeah, I'm going back.
Right there. So April one, and I should have created a
You're right.
Big red box around that. Okay.
Better.
Okay, good.
Sorry.
All good. I, I am fallible, so please
Me too.
Let me know. Again, we do have many ongoing efforts. As much as we would love to say one and done and we don't have to come back and talk about rates, this is gonna be something that is an ongoing annual discussion that we bring to the board every year. And as part of that, we, we are looking at kicking off a, a rate study for the enterprise funds, for the water and sewer fund. We would be, we're hoping to evaluate those indirect costs, which is something that you see in the budget as, as administrative overhead transfers. We would be looking at water and sewage usage rates and impact fees and base rates. And then helping to develop a plan, kind of a, an update, updatable plan for moving forward. We are continuing to support the board, excuse me, has continued to support the hardship utility grant program. And we are working internally on how to develop additional outreach materials around getting that word out more broadly. And then continuing to our community involvement, that was a very successful effort. And we have some ongoing water efficiency programs that we're working through right now as well. And as we have repeated over and over again, and I hope that you all believe that as we are turning over every stone that we can find related to identifying all the sources of grants, other funding opportunities that we can bring in to offset other costs, if not these what, these plant expansion projects, there are other CIP related costs that can be offset in other ways. So and at that, this would be the proposed motion and if you have questions.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna talk a little.
Yeah, of course.
I want, I want to go back and talk before we turn it all over. I think it's pretty important, the economies that you found going back through things. And it, I think it highlights that what you're trying to do as we go forward without having to increase the, the rates like that we didn't, you know, the drinking water, water treatment plant rates that we had already agreed to increase them. But by going back and redoing this homework over again and over and over, we found economies in ways not to do that. And I think, and I've been saying this all along, that this is, this is the direction of future endeavors of boards and mayors and administrators come to just enhance this picture as we go biannually if you have to, okay? And wastewater treatment study is exactly what needs to happen. So you can get this thing and reevaluate it because I think there's more here to be found. But we have to get this thing kicked off so we can secure the loan. So we can lock in the construction price in the contract for the plant so it doesn't go up another five or 10 million, which it does in this volatile stage right now. And, and then, and then we can go back and, and keep beating this thing up and finding every avenue we can find and make it palatable. So I appreciate you going back and finding that way of making that happen. That's what we've asked for. And, and it's not over. So I, I think now we can continue that effort with sewer rates as you go forward too. And I think I like the approach that you've done. So that's what I have to say about it. I'd like to turn it over to you guys for comment on how we've done and where we're headed. Anything on this side? Ready to kick it off? Over here. Yes.
Raising rates is so horrible. It's nothing anybody in this room wants to happen. I guarantee you the whole goal of this entire project from the very beginning was to see the most minimal impact on a residence, us included, as we all live here. So it's been heartbreaking to think of adding additional stress to any of our households in our, in our community. So that's been the forefront of all of our concerns the entire time. But I do want to mention a couple of things. I, first of all, wanted to give an extra thank you to the resident roundtable for the sewer for that project because above and beyond a lot of the, the considerations that we had, they definitely pushed for additional methods to look for savings and otherwise funding. That was very crucial, I think, to getting to the point where we're at right now. So as Megan mentioned, it was a success. I absolutely agree. I think it was an amazing success and a perfect example of collaboration and engagement with the, the dedicated members of the, of the the community who want to participate and, and help. So I want to give an extra special thank you for those of you, I see several of you in the crowd today. And it was a wonderful stepping stone to make sure that you guys are more involved in everything. So I love that opportunity. And then second to that, I want to thank our staff because they run with those recommendations and they turned it over so much quicker than I thought it was possible. So I know that that was a request that we made. And I know they committed to having some type of update within two weeks. Not only did they have an update, but it was actionable for, to impact rates for that specific thing that we were working on right then. So a huge round of applause for our staff that was able to act and, and make that happen. So I think that's amazing. So thank you guys so much. Really appreciate it. And then the other part I wanted to mention too, one of the assumptions that we read over, maybe people on the phone or anybody aren't familiar with, but another thing to credit for the lack of having to raise water rates was the ARPA funds or the American Rescue Act dollars. That was two points, well, over the course of two years would potentially be two point six million dollars that we're putting towards this effort in this fund that we otherwise would have had to likely pay for through rate increases. So I, I want to highlight that as well. And and there's a lot of reasons why we don't have to raise water rates, but that's a significant one, two point six million dollars of a reason why. So between that, the general fund transfer, the savings, the operational costs and so on. I think all those pieces coming together, making that success story from what we can see that water rates won't necessarily go up this year. So I really appreciate all the work on that. I just do want to highlight that because this is a difficult situation. And right now, I think today we have the best worst case scenario to, to select. I'm hoping that might be the direction that we're going, depending on the will of the board. But I do want everybody to know that this isn't magically resolved. It took a lot of different dollars from a lot of different sources and it will be an ongoing concern that needs to be acknowledged every single year as part of our, a part of our budgeting process. I haven't heard anybody on the board that's been against that concept of making sure that we can evaluate those and make sure that we're never in the situation now that we again, that we're never in the situation again. So that commitment for now and in the future, I think is really important too and has been a big priority of our board too. So I just want to commend everybody who had opportunity to be a part of this. The rates are still going up. That sucks, but way less than we could have anticipated. So I'm, I'm loving these models much more and, and much more comfortable with the situation that we're in. But that is my perspective and those are the notes I had. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Kane.
Yeah, I think this is a, again, difficult situation because we do need to do something for the state revolving fund loan. One of the things I'm really impressed by, since we have water and sewer is what we've been concentrating on for years. I mean, it's just some of the water stuff we got, right? So it's not like we forgot it or we are gonna forget it, but what I'm really impressed by is the modeling and the projections. We've gotten a lot more sophisticated at looking at this and being able to take suggestions from, you know, the roundtable or look at our things and actually plug it in and see what happens. And it doesn't happen instantaneously, but we've come a really long way trying to be able to predict this stuff accurately. And I think that's, I mean, you gotta have the data before you can make a decision, otherwise you're just guessing. And I could assure you in the past, when the water rates were raised back in the day, there's like, we're an increase of a buck or two dollars. There was, there was no inflation, there was no calculation, there was no capital improvement plans to save for money. It was, they were winging it. There's no, town couldn't find documentation for it. So we have come a really long way and it's, it's good to see because it gives us accurate projections. And again, I don't like what the projections say and I'm pretty sure the folks out there don't like them either. But I think they're right before we're just guessing. So that's all I gotta say.
Trustee here.
Yep. So I did also want to thank staff for finding the efficiencies and not spending all the money from twenty twenty-one. That's fantastic to hear on the water rate. So I do appreciate you guys taking action on that. So that was great news. In terms of really the only comments I have on that are the same comments that I had shared before with my concerns with the transfers for the indirect costs. I know we're still trying to work through that. I know that the board has decided not to try and engage that at this time. I still think that's something that we should have done prior to this. So for that reason, I'm not gonna be for this rate change because I think we could have lowered that had we been willing to cut some other areas to do that. But I'm grateful for what's been done on the water fund, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Well, let's open up the public comment. Keep in mind, we're trying to limit it to three minutes and, you know, we'll try to do our best to, if we can answer some questions or not, we'll try to do our best.
And I think you're gonna hear from both of the people that sit on the, the sewer roundtable.
Well, I hope so.
So, which is, which is a good thing. I just, I have one question for staff and then I wanted to make a statement too. So the question would just be, one of the things that we really, on this ongoing efforts portion that we really wanted to see come from this is the legislation that's gonna be for the sinking fund. I just want to make sure that's still being looked at because that's one thing that we are worried about. So.
Yes, yes, we will, we will add, we needed to get through this and then we'll add that to the agenda.
That's what I figured, but I just didn't see on the ongoing efforts and I was like, oh no, I hope they're not forgetting about it. So, okay.
No, we, we got it covered. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the other thing, I just wanted to, so we've been trying to figure out if I wanted to say this or not, but with the, so the public knows when we started this two months ago as, as a committee or a roundtable, the, the number that they gave us was fifty-six dollars was the suggested rate. And that was very high and we were all very against it. So we worked our tails off to get to a much better number. We obviously didn't suggest a number in our, our proposal to you guys, but it was, this is definitely much better than where we had started. So I want to thank, you know, all the roundtable for putting that effort and the town staff for listening to that. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, everybody. Lisa Chollet, I live in Wellington Downs. And a member on the roundtable with Wyatt. I also happen to be running for trustee as well. First, I wanted to say thank you for listening to everything that we said. We came up with a thousand different ideas and we really were very, very committed to not making the recommendation that was kind of being asked of us at the beginning. Wyatt is right, we did not recommend a number in part because we didn't know how many of our recommendations you guys would take. I think that overall it proved that we have some really talented people that aren't elected officials and don't work for the staff who are willing to put in time and effort and have amazing knowledge bases in a bunch of different areas. And I know that there is a group of people right now that are actively looking on their own to find grants and other funding for the town to increase the opportunity for us to not raise the rates. So on that note, I had a couple of comments. Trustee Whitehouse was right, the modeling is amazing. We use that extensively. All of us use that model that Dave had at home to come up with a lot of the ideas that we did. If we could find a way to lower this, find a way to change that, what did it do to what we needed to do for rates? So the technology was extremely helpful and I'm glad that we had it. So I printed out a couple of pages on here. One of the things I wanted to just note is that in the executive summary background part where it's talking about the need for subsequent rate increases will be reviewed and determined on a regular basis. But then with this, I want people to be clear that, and I want to be clear on the intention. When you're saying, well, next year it's gonna have to go up and then five percent increases subsequently, I would like to hope that as a town, trustees, residents, staff, that we're committed to working against that. That, I mean, for me personally, I'll work tirelessly on this roundtable to get it down to where maybe we're not increasing at all. And maybe at some point we can get it back to a competitive rate with our neighbors. But when, with the rate study, I would hope that that isn't the only information that we're making our future decisions on, that we're still gonna employ the, the resident roundtable. I think rate studies don't think about the outside of the box and the impact. Everybody here gets that bill, right? So as a board, I would just ask that you're committed to continuing to work towards little to no increase on everything, not, we fixed it this year, let's all breathe and then we sock it to them next year. Because
No.
Everything's going up and people are freaking out. Everything's going up and people are freaking out about their Excel bills and their Black Hills. I want to do a plug. You can get budget billing. It makes a huge difference. My bill went up $7 because I'm on budget billing. So I highly recommend that. Cause people are suffering. So I think that's like the biggest things that I wanted to mention. And my, just my concern that we're. Putting in these numbers is going to freak people out of 5% increase in this number when we don't know yet. Like it's, it's, everybody should know it's a possibility, but everybody should be more focused on the fact that we're going to try to. Minimize or not do that at all instead of throwing some numbers out there because. If you've ever been on Let's Talk Wellington. I only have so much time to give correct information and then like I have to feed my children and. I don't mind. I don't mind. But yeah, so just. Mitigating the panic that people have. I think that's super, super important. And the other suggestion I would say. On the outreach is reaching out to the highest users that you have in the water users. That are disproportionate to their neighbors. We can be proactive in trying to solve some of those problems and then they're not going to be. Getting four or $500 water bills. So. Just wanted to put some stuff out there. Again, thank you for the opportunity to be on the round table. Regardless about like the election outcome, I am committed to. This and being a part of that round table and moving forward to try to help my neighbors and myself. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
For all of that and running and being on a round table.
Christine Gator, downtown core. I'm going to be talking about the ordinance, the fine print. Right here. It says each additional residential user on a single tap will be charged $31. Let me tell you what that looks like. Here's a bill. Here's a bill from. A lady who owns property on Fourth Street. She has four manufactured homes on that property that she rents out. She has one tap. Yet she is charged $264 for her base rate. Her usage.
Hey, gun. One second. So there are four manufactured homes on one tap. I just want to be clear that that was the information.
That's correct. Thank you. Yes.
What size tap?
Yeah.
There's only one residential tap.
It could be three quarters. It could be an inch and a half. You can't feed four homes off of three quarter inch or a one inch tab. So the tap size would make a difference.
Okay, I don't know, but it's all the same price. And they only use, those four homes only use two units, as you can see on the bill. So their usage is $9. Yet their base rate is 264. I think that's a little excessive. And that's because of this right here. So if you look at the sewer, it's $82.52. That's four times the base rate of $20.63. So. If it increases by $11 up to 33, that's an increase of 2% because she charges $500 for rent. This is affordable living at its finest, yet. Because the base rate went up for the water. I know we're talking about sewer. That was a 5% increase on the rent right there. If we could get rid of this and just charge per tap. That would help with affordable living in this town.
But there's four homes on this.
Right, but there's only one tap. Shouldn't we charge because the meter man comes out and just reads the one tap? They only have two units.
Between four units, right?
I, I'd love to get the, just to be sure of the exact scenario because I think we're doing a lot of guessing, but without, I, I don't. I don't have access to pull up information or. On this specific billing address or service address, excuse me. So I'd love to make sure we have all the facts in front of us before we do all the math right here because. Because I don't think we know what to compare it against or tap size or a lot of questions came up and without answers to those, we can't make calculations.
What calculations do you need? It's 66 times four is 264. $20.63 times four is 82.52. They're being charged the base rate. An exorbitant amount and they only use two units. So if we get rid of this in the ordinance, it will solve this problem.
Is there potential to use four units?
I don't know. What does that matter? They're being charged four times the base rate when there's only one tap.
Another thing to mention too, this is not a standard scenario. So if anybody's looking or hearing these figures. This is not a standard, single household type of consideration. So this wouldn't be applicable to. Anybody else outside of maybe this very specific situation. So I don't want to scare people in thinking this, this. Amount that we're talking about or the amounts that you've heard are, are what's to be expected. So this is a very specific scenario. I think that. I mean, this is the first time I've considered this. So I definitely want the information before we understand. Or make any comments on this specific service address. So. People listening, I don't want you to hear the 200 and some dollars and expect that that's going to happen to you. That's not the case. This is not a standard household bill.
Anybody from staff make a comment on this because we're guessing.
I would rather not make a comment right now until we can get in and check the actual usage of how many of the taps have actually been, you know, the taps been used.
But can we get, get rid of it from the ordinance so it doesn't pass and raise her, her rent another 2% please?
I do really appreciate you bringing this to our attention though, so we could probably reach out to this.
I just don't want it to pass tonight with it being raised on her. If you just take that out and you could add it later after looking at information, maybe. That would be.
Bad policy. That is really bad policy. You don't wing this stuff. I don't think.
Excuse me, would you mind using your microphone?
Thank you, Trustee White House.
I think that's a bad way to make policy crossing stuff out as a line item. I understand you're upset about this and I, we suggested we'll look at it. But this is not how you do things and make informed decisions. This is just a random line cross out and. We don't know what the implications are. Is that, is it reasonable to have the data? Before you make the decision or is it ready, fire, aim?
But you're going to make the decision tonight with this in it and you don't have the data.
We have the data on the rates.
Okay, that's, we got this. All right, that's a lot of, we appreciate that. And it seems like this is pretty specific and it does need to be looked at, but thank you for bringing that up.
Someone from staff to speak to as to why that is in there, not, not the bill, but that section that says we're charging a base rate, not per tap, but per user. Cause that might be addressed this whole question here, just knowing why that wording is even in there. Cause obviously, okay.
Excuse me, Cheryl. Thank you.
Sorry, let's, let's see if we can clear that up.
Sure. Again, Megan Smith, Deputy Director of Public Works. So those tap fees are going to be. With the sewer tap fee with each one of those base rates, that includes a usage rate, right? As part of that base rate, you're getting a certain amount of volume that's being. Allowed to be treated as part of that. And with every additional unit that you have, you have an additional load to the system that has to be accounted for and is part of the built in modeling. That's utilized to make sure that we're covering our cost of service to provide. What is needed to treat that at the, at the plant. And when we have multiple units and we have the prospect of service, it's not the right word. Use that a better word. That we, that at some point or at any point, those units could be filled and you have four units. Then at that point we would have to serve that. And if we're not collecting the appropriate amount of, of. Dollars to cover those costs, we would be at a deficit again. Does that touch on, is that, and do you have anything to add?
Bob Gowing, Public Works Director. The only thing I would really have to add is that if there's four units, that's four times as much wastewater as one unit. The base rate is attached to one unit. So. To me, it seems fairly simple. If a couple of those units are vacant, well, that's a kind of a different question, right? But in general, every unit, every home that has toilets in it and sinks and everything else. That usually creates a kind of a typical loading to our plant. That we have to treat, right? So not. Charging for base rates would basically mean we're only charging them a fourth of the base rate that everybody else gets charged.
Hey, thank you. Hold on, I think we had Ms. Teets here. You were next.
Hi there, Sherelle Teets, 4525 Ingalls Drive. I have actually a question stemming off of that. If you go to page. This is going to be easier if I do it this way. So in discussion about the, the sewer, water and sewer round table. It lists in here that there was a recommendation made. That an equitable share needs to be had. And they were just discussing that you can't charge. One base rate when there's four homes and I totally understand that. My question comes from ensure, ensure equitable impacts to resident and non-residential customers. Can I have one this defined to me and what is not equitable about it right now? And the other things. Cause I think that's actually a really important one. It seems to be the only thing we haven't addressed in all of the rates. Is a discussion. Everyone kind of just dances around it. So I'm trying to figure out what equitable. Between residential and non-residential means. And then what amounts were allocated for HUG? And then I would also like to know with the rate study, if this includes. The entire gamma of all water studies. So we're doing sewer, we're doing water, but we're also looking at residential and non-residential. Is part of the rate study. And then I noticed when it's listed that we come out of our deficit in 2026. How do we come out of that deficit? Is that from an additional increase in rates again? Or is that just because of the sinking fund that they've set aside?
It's based on anticipated growth. So, so tap fees.
Got it. So, and we approve, we're at what, 100? We have a moratorium on it right now, correct?
No.
So the moratorium was lifted?
There was no more moratorium.
So the 100 permits a year.
It's a restriction.
Got it. Perfect. So 100 homes a year. So the rate that we're estimating is off of that only 100 homes.
No. Well, yes, that's included in the calculation, but once the water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plants are online. Our building department has done robust modeling. To help balance out the amount of growth that it'll take to help balance that fund.
Got it. So there's numbers for that.
Up to 2045.
Is that, that's in, is that in the water utility that model that Mr. Myers developed?
Perfect. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Teets. Pretty. A lot of points there.
Hi, I'm Lowry Moyer again. I live in the Hatfield House, actually. So I, a little background about myself, I do work with Habitat for Humanity in Wold County. So I'm a huge advocate for affordable housing. And I do want to say. We have recently built a Milliken. They require their developers to bring in one share of water for a single family home. So already if you're doing your calculations based on this example, we were given. This individual who has four units on two taxes already making out way better than most of the residents in this town. So I think there are ways that you can look at utility rates. And explore circuit breaker policies at a local level that include everything from capping. Property taxes to looking at capping utility and water rates for individuals making between certain AMIs. So 30 to 80% of the local AMI. Or 50, 30 to 50, so that those that can afford their $300 water bill can do so. But those that can't are not being cost burdened and pushed out of their homes. I'm in favor of this because I think it's necessary infrastructure, infrastructure, but we do have to continue to explore it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good information.
I'd love to talk to you more about this offline if that's okay, just to get some more of your expertise. Thank you.
Anyone else like to come up? Would you like to come up and do that?
Yeah.
Lisa Chollet, Round Table Member. Equitable impact. So the easiest way that I can explain that for people who don't understand the difference between equal and equitable. And I know equitable is deemed a political term. I promise you the word existed long before it was used in politics. But our intention is as a resident, if my rate increase is going to be $10 and that represents 10% increase. Then we want an equitable increase to businesses, which is not $10, but 10%. And that's what we, that is what we asked for an equitable impact. If you're. I'm trying to think of a really good business here. That makes a lot of money, but. I don't want to use anybody. Well, I know, but I don't want to specifically say someone and then have them yell at me on Facebook. So. Come and go. Let's use come and go. They're not going to yell at me. So. Come and go is not going to freak out if their water and sewer bill goes up $10, right? It's not going to mean anything to them. And it's not an equitable, equitable impact. Not that they should freak out, but they should feel the same 10% increase that a resident feels when theirs goes up. And that's super important. Equal would be $10 across the board. Equitable is 10% across the board, if that makes sense. Everybody has different tap sizes. So if you have a two inch tap or a four inch tap, your increase is going to be substantially higher than a normal resident. But if you have that tap, you have a reason for that and probably have the funds to cover that increase. So that the residents, residents aren't bearing the brunt of increases in sewer and water. Does that help? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We're going to close the public meeting. Bring it back to the board for final comment. If you have any, please bring it up. None on the side?
Wait.
Go. Well, I'm sorry.
Whoa, saved it to the end. I just want to say thank you to. The board, the staff and the community because we, it was all hands on deck for this. Everybody contributed to this challenge. And we touched on at least one goal. In all four corners of our strategic plan through this project. So I think that it's something to be really proud of and it's a really great example to set for the communities around us on how to address. These water challenges because it doesn't stop here with the rates. It starts with redundant source. It continues on with working with our current provider. So. It's, this isn't the end. This is just a small piece of the beginning. And water is so very complicated. It has its own court system. And if something has its own court system, for heaven's sake, that's pretty complicated. So I'm very thankful that we have staff. Like Megan and Bob Gowing and Cody Bird to give us all of these intricate projections. And Dave Myers with his Excel genius. So I mean, everybody's been hands on deck. We've had trustee White House and Mayor Hammond out advocating with our state representatives. We had our community round table that we have just talked about and it's going to be, you know. Our baseline moving forward for addressing these. Kinds of challenges. And then the staff just dropping everything that they're doing to. Answer some of these difficult questions or shift gears. Or try and find a different perspective to make cuts when cuts can't always be made. So thank you so much to everybody that has contributed to this very, very difficult. And painful process. That's.
Thank you. Anything? Final?
Said, yeah, because I mean, we've talked about the importance of doing this, even though we may not like to do it. Because the state revolving fund loan, which is due in March. So question if for some horrible reason. We didn't pass this and we missed the deadline. It pushed us back six months. So I think Mr. Gowing suggested that if we become, if we're in violation of either state or EPA rules, that there was a possibility of $54,000. A day per violation. Would we run into that if? Cause those, I mean, I'm just saying the cost of not doing anything may in fact be really expensive.
Yeah, the, a long-term do nothing approach would definitely be extremely expensive for sure. The, I think it is 54,830 something is the per day, per violation. Risk that we would run and a six month delay to the process of this project would run us up into a whole variety of other unknowns. And a six-month delay to the process of this project would run us up into a whole variety of other unknowns. We have our, like our known unknowns, which would be related to additional constraints and requirements from the funding sources themselves that are being fleshed out at this currently. Where the additional, those funds would then come from for the SRF one process. That's probably the highest risk.
I think Mr. Donald Rumsfeld would be pleased by your comment, the known unknowns.
The concerns I heard through public comment, I think are landed well and I think are super important for our next steps. And definitely, it's not perfect, but it's always getting better. And there's more opportunity. So I love that. So one of them discussing what's a step increases, not having them set now, but managed on a year-to-year basis as we see consumption and use. And actually look at those revenues and this whole model all over every single year with fresh look of eyes and more work for funding options, budget efficiencies, those kind of things. So those are, those are for sure next steps. No question about it. Those will always be happening. I think the rate study too, I know that that's a concern that seems a little not so personalized, but something I'm looking forward to in the rate study is maybe looking at trends or something regionally for water that maybe we haven't considered or hasn't affected us yet to make sure that we're planning for those scenarios too, that are a little bit outside of our bubble at this point. I don't want surprises. So I'm really looking forward to that too. And the holistic review, which I think will give us a lot of answers to that equity question. And that's, that's where we've struggled a long time, understanding commercial versus residential rates. What is fair? What is equitable? So seeing what it is in other communities as best practices or how to, you know, delegate those loads of expenses, I think will be really important to have a professional's perspective on. So that kind of acknowledges some of the things that I heard come up, but that's definitely on the plan and top of mind as well. And then a really good point that came up was regarding affordable affordability in general. Obviously this contributes, this is a household expense, but affordability is a plague that is already affecting Colorado in general. And it's going to be worse and worse going forward. It's the primary goal for the Colorado Municipal League this year. So the consolidated, all the municipalities across Colorado are part of the Colorado Municipal League. And they determined that affordable housing is the biggest worst problem in Colorado. And that if it's not acknowledged immediately and we're not taking action immediately, we're falling more and more behind. Also acknowledging that we already are behind and it's no longer a poverty-related issue. It's a middle-class, upper-middle-class affordability concern. So I appreciate that coming up in this conversation. I know it's in the front of minds and I know that we have a lot of work to do. But I wanted to focus on that as well, something I heard that resonates very deeply with me. So I'm going to be doing some additional research and whatever we can hear or ways that we can make it more equitable. So people who have less can do, can do what they need to with less. That's also a definition of equity. That we could see how to do that. Right now, it's not in this model. Right now, it's not in our plans, but there's no reason why it doesn't necessarily have to stay that way. So in the future, that's something I want to really focus on as we're looking at these models and how to be where we need to be. Also, the fund balance conversation, we're considering changing that fund balance policy. And then some of the other pieces that participate in helping us get out of fund balance, get back into compliance with fund balance are also that sinking fund balance that you'll see is the red stacked bars on page 40, for example, the packet. So that's another explanation of how we get back into fund balances, that sinking fund. Which obviously does require additional care and that will follow immediately those conversations. So thank you for bringing that forward again, though. So, so many things to consider. And that's our, of course, after we've already flushed out so many issues. So again, a big thank you to everybody who's participating. I think this is based on our restraints and what needs to happen. Again, this is the best case scenario, very difficult situation. So I am in favor of moving forward with these rate changes. I just want to make sure, of course, and it's on everybody's mind and a big priority, that we do acknowledge and continue this work. So I'm completely dedicated to doing that. And I've never heard anything other than that from the board. So I want to make sure everybody realizes that's our motivations here.
Okay, final comment from me. Appreciate all the hard work. I've been working on it for four years myself. I'm glad to see it come to this point. Now the real work will start after this. Find out, make it palatable for the rest of the town. And that can go for a long time. And this, it could, there could be a game changer in the next year. There's a lot of things out there. Oh my gosh. And you know what? With this in place, we're ahead of a lot of other towns. Okay? There's shovel-ready projects here. That means when the money does flow, and it will come, it just hasn't come yet. We are poised to be in a good position to get the best we can get better than other towns. Other towns are now where we're at right now, just now figuring this out. We're ahead of the game in a lot of areas. So I'm looking forward to seeing that. And it's, that work is just now beginning. We're going to just, we just got to get started. We got to get security of the loan, construction contract and get going. Yeah, one final.
One last thing. The HUG utility grant came up earlier. I wanted to highlight that for anybody who's new tuning in or watching online. Everybody here is very familiar to me. So I think you guys have heard the speech a million times. I'm sorry. But the HUG utility grant is a $300 grant from the town of Wellington. If you are struggling with your utility bill for water. It's a one-time based on hardship. It's a hardship utility grant. That's the H. So I want to make sure everybody knows that that's available. What we're considering here looks around for the average user 13 to $14 increase on a monthly basis. So and I've heard that $300 might not mean a lot to people, but it does. $300 is a lot if you're going through hardship. So please, if you need help and if you're going through something difficult, please seek out that grant application online at the town of Wellington website. Fill out the application and we would love to help you with your utility bill. This is a difficult time for so many people. So if you are in a situation where this is impacting you extremely hardly, I would love for you to get that assistance. So I just want to make sure everybody remembers that's out there.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone. With that being said, can I get a motion to approve ordinance number 03-2022 and ordinance establishing the fees to be charged by the town of Wellington, Colorado for the sewer utility service? So moved?
Second.
Oh, please.
Trustee Gator?
No.
Trustee Kenny?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Hey folks, thank you. Now the work begins. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees.
Thank you for everything, Megan. Good answers, good questions. Okay, we're going to move on to item three, number, ordinance number 04-2022. This is an ordinance concerning the town of Wellington's planning commission. Mr. Sapienza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan Sapienza with March and Olive Town Attorneys. The ordinance in front of you is the second of the ordinances that the town staff plans to bring to the board regarding plan, town boards and commissions. We had a discussion at a work session in, I believe, August to discuss the many different plans and commissions and some of the changes that would we recommend to those. Probably the first change that's in here that you may not even notice is standardizing the language. One of the You want me to get closer to the microphone? Excuse me. Standardizing the language is an important point in this. The Wellington Town Code has been adopted over a number of years with a lot of these different boards and commissions kind of copied and pasted in from other towns. And we've noted how that difficulty that that can cause earlier tonight. So what we're doing is standardizing the language, membership vacancies, terms of office, how they're appointed, how meetings are run. So making sure that each board and commission kind of operates in a similar way. Another major change in this ordinance is membership on the planning commission itself. Currently, the planning commission is seven members, one of whom is the mayor, two of whom are trustees. This ordinance would recommend making all of the members of that board, all seven, residents of the town of Wellington, appointed by the town board. We'll get to, I'll get to that in a little more detail in just a second. I can see the mayor's eager to talk about that. The third main change here is co-membership. A lot of our boards and commissions allow only, members to only be members on the one board or one commission at a time. Or that was one of the suggestions of that work session was to make that the case. This ordinance would allow members of the planning commission to also be members of the Board of Adjustments. And we'll talk about why that might be important here in a second. Process for how we got here, as I mentioned, we had a work session, I believe it was in August. A long discussion about all of the various boards and commissions. We've already brought before you the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. It was a couple of months ago. At the beginning of January, we took this draft ordinance to the planning commission itself. We think it's really important that before we bring to the Board of Trustees an ordinance to change a board and commission, that board or commission should, should weigh in, should give us their input on it. And we talked to them in January. They brought up some really good issues. Generally, I think the planning commission was supportive of the change. But a couple of the primary issues that are brought up are just what I brought or mentioned earlier with the major changes that are happening here. First is board membership being excluding members of this board here in front of you today. Reason we recommend that trustees not also be members of the planning commission is one of the important roles of the planning commission is making recommendations to the Board of Trustees. So when you have three members of the planning commission that are members of the Board of Trustees, you have an interesting situation where the trustees are recommending to themselves the changes in law that they would like to see. Another issue that wouldn't address changes in law, but would be quasi judicial hearings that the planning commission might hold, which are hearings about specific property owners' rights and what they can do with their land. Quasi judicial hearings have very specific requirements. Those hearings need to be based on facts and a very detailed record. So when the planning commission creates that record and makes their findings of facts, one of the first things we tell all of our planning commission members is avoid ex parte communications. So they'll have that quasi judicial hearing. There will be three members of the Board of Trustees sitting there, taking part in that quasi judicial hearing and making a recommendation. The next step in, for example, a conditional use hearing would be to come before the Board of Trustees. So here you have three members of the Board of Trustees who've already sat through an entire quasi judicial hearing, hearing all of the record at the planning commission. Yet at, when that comes before the Board of Trustees for the quasi judicial hearing in front of the Board of Trustees, we have the same issue that you need to have a clear record, clear facts. And you have those three members who were on the planning commission, who not only have had some ex parte communications, they've had an entire hearing that isn't in front of the Board of Trustees as they're making that decision. This creates some issues of due process that we think would be best to be just simply avoid by not having members of the Board of Trustees on the planning commission. The third reason this is perhaps difficult is the outsized influence of those Board of Trustee members. Both at the planning commission level and at the Board of Trustees level. So when you have three trustees sitting on the planning commission, the other members of that planning commission might look to the trustees and say, how should I vote on this? Will it pass at the Board of Trustees? So then you've got the board of those trustees who have a very strong input on how other members of the planning commission might vote. And then you bring that issue up to the Board of Trustees and they receive that recommendation. And members of the board here might look to those three members of the planning commission and say, how did the planning commission vote? Did they do a good job? So you have those three members who have a really strong input or strong influence, outsized influence on both, both decision-making processes. Regarding the Board of Adjustments, that was another major conversation point that was had with the planning commission. This ordinance allows members of the planning commission to be members of the Board of Adjustments as well. The reason we went with that option was one of the conversations that we had at the work session back in July or August, whenever that work session was. The Board of Adjustments has often a lot of trouble recruiting members. Currently, the Board of Adjustments has of its seven members, excuse me, five members and two alternates. It currently only has four members.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Dan. For the people that are online and the people in the audience, can you please just give a really quick synopsis of what the Board of Adjustments is exactly?
The Board of Adjustments is one of the important boards of the town of Wellington required by state statute that here has hearings on variances from the zoning code, essentially. That also is appeals from decisions of the planning department or the planning official. So it's an important, it's a very important board, but it doesn't meet that often. The last time that the Board of Adjustments met in the town of Wellington, I believe was in June of 2021. Now, when it did meet, very important for the people that have that, have the issue that needs to be before it. And that's one of the challenges with that board having a vacancy. It's had a vacancy for a number of months and it has five members and two alternates who are members of the Board of Trustees. But right now it only has four members and the two alternates. For many decisions that the Board of Adjustments will make when they're making decision on a variance or on an appeal, it actually requires four votes. So we've had, there could be an instance where not enough, you could have a quorum, but still not enough people to vote, essentially. But like I said, that, the Board of Adjustments has had a vacancy for some time. It's been a, at least lately, it's been a challenge to recruit for that board. Partially because, I would say, partially because of the infrequency with which it meets. So at the work session, it was discussed perhaps blending the two boards. Now, they would remain two very separate entities. It would be the planning commission and the Board of Adjustments. But those two boards could have all of the same members. That might create an opportunity where the Board of Adjustments would gain from that experience and that knowledge of the planning commission members who would also sit in that role. Because generally the planning commission, well, it pretty much meets every month. The members of the planning commission are well-versed in a variety of areas of town code. But that wouldn't be required. And I think that's important. This is part of the conversation of the planning commission where they're concerned about the time requirement. They're concerned about just quickly merging those two boards into one. What this ordinance does is it merely says they may be members of both boards. So if it were passed, when it becomes effective April 19th, it would be optional. But at that point, perhaps a member of the planning commission might say, I would like to also apply for that vacancy on the Board of Adjustments. And simply allowing that joint membership could fill that vacancy that's been sitting out there for a long time very quickly. The other benefit of having the joint membership is if this passes on April 19th, when it would go into effect, the planning commission would go from seven members, including member, three members of the Board of Trustees, down to four members very quickly. So it might also then create an opportunity for the members of the Board of Adjustments who might say, I'd like to apply to be on the planning commission, to then apply to be on the planning commission. And so it wouldn't require the two boards to be the same, but it would allow that to happen. Of course, that would all be up to the appointment of this board. So it's kind of an optional process, but we think it'd be at least worth exploring. It's worked in a number of other communities. So we think that would be a positive, potentially a positive thing. Next steps for this, if this, if you do decide to pass this tonight, it goes, goes into effect on April 19th. We have a lot of work to do then. As I said, we'd quickly go from seven members down to four members. So we'd have to work to recruit fill some of those seats on the planning commission. We'd also have to adopt bylaws for the planning commission. And Cody's not very happy that one of the changes that's in this ordinance is it requires bylaws of these committees. We want to have processes in place and we want to standardize that, but also have the committee itself or the planning commission itself adopt those bylaws. So Cody's already complained a little bit that we're going to be adopting bylaws, but I promised him that I would help. So. So we think this would be a positive, positive change. I would be happy to answer any questions. And Cody also would be happy to answer any questions.
I saw some wheels turn in as you're talking. So I was hoping you can give a little background as to why we are operating the way we are now and why that's kind of standard. Because we, you mentioned a lot of reasons why beneficial to not operate this way. But how did we get here in the first place? I don't want the idea to be that that was intentional by any means. That's just how it is at the moment.
You are absolutely right. There's nothing wrong with the way we are operating right now. Planning commissions by state statute default to four members of the public, residents of the town, two members of the governing body and one mayor. That is the state default. And you have to understand that municipalities in Colorado, statutory municipalities, Wellington's not the smallest by any stretch of the imagination. There's a lot of statutory municipalities that have boards this size. That's, you know, that's almost a majority of the population of the town. Maybe not quite that. But it makes a lot of sense in very small towns to keep that expertise. The reason we're, and so, so it's the default. There's nothing wrong with the way we're doing it right now. And we think the trustees and the mayor, everybody's done a great job making sure that their communications and what happens at the planning commission stays at the planning commission as they come up to Board of Trustees for quasi judicial hearings. commission as they come up to Board of Trustees for quasi judicial hearings. And, but that factored into how we were kind of thinking about this. Cause we thought maybe there'd be a possibility of, or had been recommended, what if there were just one member? You know, do we have to get rid of all three, both trustees and the mayor? Could it be one voting member of the Board of Trustees that then was also on the planning commission? Or maybe the mayor was also on the planning commission? That doesn't eliminate the problem. It might make some of those problems worse, like the outsized influence of that single individual. But there are real due process issues with the current setup that is the default under state statute. And if a person came before this board for a quasi judicial hearing where this board determines its rights and that person decided to sue the town and was went to court, right now, we have a very defensible position of why our Board of Trustees is on the planning commission. And that is, that's what the statute says. If we change that, if we vary from that state, that default that's in the statutes, then we have to defend why we would, why we would have done that. And we might have to put additional precautions in place. So we think that might cause some problems, but currently this is the default. We think it's worked well. It could continue to work well. We think there's a better possibility. And the planning commission, we have a lot of very engaged members of the public. We think the planning commission is a great opportunity for individuals to gain a lot of very good knowledge about how the town works and why it works the way it does. So this creates an opportunity for more engagement.
I appreciate that. And I agree too. If anybody was considering being on the planning commission, it is the finest crash course on everything to know about Wellington. So you also get sucked in and then might start running for trustee. But, but if you want to know or all the operations of how our town works, man, that's, that's the place to go. And you will get all the knowledge you need over and over and over again. So, but yeah, I'm, I am an agreeance ever, I am currently a member, a planning commissioner, and I was that well before I was a trustee. That's what sucked me in. And I agree with these changes completely. I, I understand the benefits and the concerns associated with how we're doing it now. And I, I agree that there's a very capable residents within our town that would make wonderful decisions and then provide that safety net for our town to keep us from any concerns for, if we were sued or if that were the case. So I don't have any other questions. So thanks.
Great presentation and explanation of the due process issues and the quasi judicial stuff. I, I am also on the planning commission and I would vote to kick us off as my, I'm supportive of this because if it's not best practices, then let's, we're moving through this, let's tune this stuff up and do the right thing and you know. So I'm supportive of passing this.
So I have a question. I'm in favor of the taking the board members off of it. But for the same reason, why would you allow both planning commission and Board of Adjusters members to be the same? When you still kind of have the same information transferred question?
One issue with the Board of Adjustments with its infrequent, infrequent meetings is those members are not always able to get the same expertise. And especially the Board of Adjustments would benefit from the knowledge that's gained from being a planning commission member. And long-term, we think it would be best, best if those members were all the same. All the, down the road somewhere. But also the planning commission isn't necessarily making recommendations, is making recommendations to the Board of Adjustments. The Board of Adjustments doesn't hear appeals from the, the, the planning commission. So just, it's a different relationship between the two. And in fact, they really would benefit from the, the joint knowledge.
Does not the Board of Adjustments, don't they hear appeals if, from this board? If there's a, they don't, they don't review the actions of the planning commission. They would possibly review the actions of the Board of Trustees?
They were, it's more variance. They do more variances and they, and they will hear appeals from decisions of the planning department, planning official. Yeah.
Also, just to be noted is that's a best practice across other municipalities or is that similar?
I wouldn't say that that's necessarily a best practice, but it is a practice that's worked well in other areas. And that's why we're, we're not, this ordinance doesn't say that's the way it's got to be. You know, this is, this is saying, let's make, let's try it. Let's make it possible. If it works, it works well. Cody's had some experience with towns that have done it that way. We've done a lot of research and there's a number of municipalities, another number of counties that do it that way. The benefits are membership, meetings. A lot of times the Board of, or the planning commission would have a Board of Adjustments meeting before the planning commission because it's the same members and then they would have the planning commission later. Especially with a board like that, that meets so infrequently, that can be really nice. That can be really beneficial to keep them engaged on a regular basis.
So like us on a liquor board, back to back, same time.
Trusty Gator, you got your thing.
So no, I, I think these are good changes. I like the things that you brought up and I would agree. I think we've worked hard to do that. But I do, I have seen that, especially I think there was one item that had been in front of the planning commission, I think three times before it came to the Board of Trustees. And you know, as one of the trustees who, this was my first time hearing this, as I was asking for questions, I think a comment was made at some point of like, we've heard this three times. And I'm sitting here, I'm like, this is the first time I've heard this. So I think this is good. I think it really prevents there being future problems. And I think it does just make it so when we're getting stuff, we're getting the same information all at the same time. I think it's a great idea. I, so just to clarify, because I had the same concern on the Board of Adjustment. So there's never a time where the Board of Adjustments is hearing an appeal on anything the planning commission does. Is that correct statement?
I believe that is a correct statement, but because Cody has been at a lot more planned, a Board of Adjustments meetings than I have. So let me.
That was my only concern with the combining of the two, because I wasn't sure exactly how they operated there.
Thanks and good evening, Cody Bird, Planning Director. That is a true statement. I, there's the appeal process is appeal of an administrative official. So planning staff, that our Board of Adjustments does also serve as the appeals board for construction trades. So if it's a building code question, they also serve as for the floodplain regulation. So if there's an appeal of the floodplain administrator, that would go to the Board of Adjustments as well.
Perfect. Thank you. No further questions.
All good here. Okay. I, I think one, the biggest benefit I see of it myself is filling those Board of Adjustment when you need them, because we don't have, you know, lacking people all the time. And this time, now you got people to pull from. Anyway, I like that, that are educated. Okay, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. Anyone have anything to say? Please come up.
Christine Gator, Downtown Corps. I'm on Board of Adjustments and so I like the idea of being on the planning commission. But the variance that we do is we're giving an exception to the rule that the planning commission made. Isn't that a conflict of interest since the planning commission made the code? And then we're saying it's okay for you to break the code.
Good question. So was that, is that true?
The Board of Trustees adopts the code. Certainly the planning, planning commission would make the recommendations for the land use code to the Board of Trustees and they're very involved in it. But when you're the Board of Adjustments, if they're making exceptions, who better to analyze whether those exceptions are appropriate than the people who know best and know that code very well? So I'd actually say that's a, is a benefit. Okay?
So I'm sorry, I just want to circle back and repeat what you said to make sure that I'm understanding that process clearly. So I want to rewalk that path. So the planning commission reviews the land use code. They make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees is the governing body that approves the code. So then homeowner A wants to do something different on their land. And so they go through the process to bring it to the Board of Adjustments, which is then making the exception to the code the town board approved, not the planning commission, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Potentially. And, and.
I just wanted to rewalk that path. So I understood clearly.
Such a request from the homeowner for a variance. There's, there certainly will be no guarantee that they would be doing that. There's a lot that, a lot that the board considers, but yes, that is the process.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close the public comment at this point, bring it back to the board for consideration. There's nothing else to add. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 042022, an ordinance concerning the town of Wellington Planning Commission.
So moved. I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Trusty Gator?
Yes.
Trusty Kenny?
Yes.
Yes.
Trusty Whitehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson?
Yes.
Mayor Hammond?
Yes. Okay. That does it for action items. We move on to reports. Town attorney, anything else?
I just have one minor update regarding the marijuana local licensing authority. Kristen Brown, who is appointed by this board to serve in that role, she's adopted regulations, rules and regulations as, as requested. And there, those were adopted by February 1st. And I believe they're, they should be posted on the website currently under the marijuana licensing authority. For her work so far, I meant to have the invoice open for a total for the board, just so you knew how much we're looking at. And it was right around $3,400 for her work so far. So I think she was a really good investment. She did a very good job and was able to get those rules and regulations adopted very quickly. And so I look forward to working with her for, that's the only update I have right now.
Okay. Town Administrator.
Just to follow up with a couple of the questions that came up tonight. So I missed, Ms. Teets had asked about the HUG grant. As I mentioned, it was $300 per person. The trustees approved a budget of $6,000 for that grant. I have told the trustees that if we come to the point where those funds are expended and there's no more left, I will come back and talk to you and see about filling that fund more with additional dollars in order to keep that fund going for the year. I, there was another question about, I think it was about the water rate study and making sure that whoever we hire understands like the local concerns and understands Wellington. My goal in that is to, is we will be including the sewer round table in that rate study process. So they will be bringing that local knowledge and local, you know, information and concerns of the, of the residents to that, to that rate study. And Lowry, I want to talk to you as well, if you're still here about your ideas, because that is something new. So thank you very much for bringing that up tonight. End of my report. Thank you.
Okay. Anything from staff? You're all good. Okay. Board members, bring anything up. Go ahead.
No report.
All right. Anyone else?
I got something. Oh, it's here. Do you want to hear that little update? So, so I went to the Northern Colorado Water Association annual meeting today where they did vote in, and the town doesn't use it. Pheasant Run has Northern Colorado water. And they agreed to raise their rates from $44 to $46 per 5,000, which sounds pretty sweet. They've also continued, they're continuing their moratorium on taps, which they put in in August of 2020. And there are some people who are building their homes. They're issuing zero, zero taps. And people say, when are you going to issue a new tap? And they said, we don't know. We're at maximum capacity. They gotta try. They've used up their, they're taking all the water from the wells legally they can. They're using up their contract water from Elko and Weld. And so people are like, well, when are you going to do it? And they're like, we have no idea. So the other thing is, so part of the thing is Weld County, they have moratorium on taps. Severance has stopped all building. Evans has issued a tap moratorium and they said they wouldn't bring theirs back on until NISP was built. That's, I don't know if that's going to happen in my lifetime. So there was some question about what's going on around the area. Ms. Garcia and Trusty Knuts and I are taking the water leadership class down at CSU. That's pretty intense and it ain't getting any better here. There's not going to be more water. It's going to go, it's going to become more expensive. We're going to have to be better at how we use it. And I mean, talking about, can you get 100% efficiency out of each gallon? So I mean, what we're sadly, we're at the cusp of this because other communities are going to be running into, except maybe not Greeley, you know. So, but it was interesting and it was interesting, the same frustrations that we have heard here were absolutely positively expressed by the water users for that group. And it's, I guess it's a lot smaller group. I mean, Wellington's a lot bigger than they are, but exact same frustrations. And I'm not sure if this is an accurate number, but their water tap costs, I think $74,000. So I'm like, how can you afford that? But they're not selling anymore. They're like, well, can't do it. So it was just interesting to see that because it's again, a little perspective further away, even though they, they have service on the other side of County Road Nine and maybe north up into the dairies and stuff like that. I'm not totally sure where, so.
Couple of years, we might be a water provider.
That's funny. Good call.
Sorry.
Hard no.
My gosh. Fire that guy.
I have, I have. I do want to bring attention to everybody who's online or here. If you are interested in learning more about anything that we talked about, all the, all the packets and all the information presentations that we showed today are available in the board packets, which are always available archived on the town of Wellington website. It's really easy to get to. You go to the town of Wellington, you go to boards and commissions, and then you can look at the, the packet information is there. Also, other big headers on the website that are worth mentioning because are really important right now. One is asking for feedback on land use code updates. Another one's candidate information for upcoming elections. There's information on the HUG assistance program. There's a ton of other really valuable information there. If you feel like you're out of the loop, the website's a great place to start. Also following the town of Wellington, the official, the actual town of Wellington on Facebook, they have such great information that comes out all the time. A lot of people are like, nobody's ever told me this. I've never heard this before. And I was like, there's such great information on the Facebook page and they do a really good job marketing that information out to you. You have a great communications team. So please sign up for those. And then you will have a lot more information. And then we always like to hear your suggestions as well. And there's ways to reach out to the board using the, the board link in the town of Wellington website too. So many resources there. But if that's not your way and that's not your jam on how to learn things, reach out to us too. We'd love to meet with you one-on-one, have a phone call, whatever you want to do. If you want to know more information so you can contribute more, provide us individually your suggestions. We'd love to hear them. We're always open to do that. So that's a great way to get in contact with us. So I just want to let everybody know.
Thank you very much. A sec. Anything further?
There's a newsletter too, which is awesome, which I didn't read John's note that he pushed over to me. Sorry. The newsletter is fantastic. Senator for that too.
Keep her going if you want. I mean, thanks guys. Good stuff. All right. Is that it? You don't think the election thing is correct? Well.
You'll have to send me that link.
April 5th.
Let's look into that. We got to have that right. Thanks, Sherelle. Appreciate it. Okay, folks. I got 801. I'd like to get a motion adjourned meeting, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, guys. Okay. There's nobody in there.
It all says, yeah. So none of it's listed. So I just want to make sure people.
Well, they took, they took.
I think he said Michelle. It's like, who is Michelle?